Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. It being seven o'clock and a quorum present, I'm going to call this February 12 meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board to order. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 29, 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so in person or via the Zoom meeting application. The link is on the town website. First on our agenda this evening are administrative notes, beginning with our minutes. We have minutes for January 8 and January 22 of 2025. Do I have questions, comments, changes from members of the board? Seeing none, I will call for a motion, and I will ask if people want to do them singularly or combined.
I'd like to make a motion to combine both orders.
Okay, so...
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of doing the minutes combined? Raise your hand, please. Unanimous, all right. Do I have a motion with respect to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Bennett, second by Mr. Donaldson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. Next on our agenda this evening, no covenants, plans, or releases, we have a street name approval, B437 Pine Hills LLC, Outlook Road East. Anything from staff?
Nothing to add. This is a standard street name approval.
Okay, so this is street name approval for Outlook Road East. Do I have a motion from anyone on the board?
Motion so made.
Motion to approve the name. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. Next, we have Form A plans, A4891 Develis Family Living Trust Lot Line Adjustment, MAP 043 Lots 093 and 094, to create a single lot. Anything from staff?
This A&R plan represents a dissolution of lot lines. It's just to create one lot and clarify what is currently more than one lot, so fairly straightforward.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from the board?
Motion to endorse.
I have a motion to endorse. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. Next on our agenda are our announcements. First announcement is I'd like to welcome our associate member, our new associate member, Chris Smith. Chris, welcome. Thank you very much for stepping up and volunteering to do this very thankless task of sitting there and listening to the rest of us. I do appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you. Next, we have some master plan information. The master plan survey is open until this coming Sunday, February 16th. That'll be the last time for members of the public to participate in this phase of the master plan, after which the consultants will be gathering both the raw data and the community's input in order to start preparing some outlines for various options and scenarios. That will be presented later to the community as part of seminar forum, community forum, and there will be more opportunities to comment at that point. But at this point, for the initial visioning stage, as it were, the survey will close this Sunday, so please, anyone who hasn't, please do participate in the surveys, and please get your friends, relatives, neighbors, everyone involved. The more people we hear from, the better it is for the town. Along with that, as part of the master plan process, we have the Pilgrim 1600 Forum. That is tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, being held at PCIS. This is part of the visioning forum discussing in deeper dive possible outcomes and goals for the 1,600 acres, as it is being referred to, associated with the former Pilgrim nuclear power site. We look forward to hearing from the community, get their thoughts and ideas. Our goal, obviously, since we don't own the land, is to figure out what the community would like to see and come up with ideas as to how we may achieve that, whether that is through zoning changes, encouraging the owner of the property to sell the property, or use the property in manners that the town feels are consistent with its goals. So again, looking forward to everybody's participation in that. There will be more beyond the single event, but this will be the first of the visioning sessions for that and the kickoff for that. 6:00 PM, again, at PCIS tomorrow. I am pleased to next announce, the state has approved the funding for the Grantham Redbrook Project, approved by Town Meeting last fall, sorry, last spring. This is an exciting development for Plymouth. This is part of a new model of affordable housing, a great example of state, local, and private partnerships. Hopefully, this project goes as smoothly as we all would like it to, and we are, we will be able to welcome 62 residents to all affordable, seniors to all affordable housing in Redbrook, and that this can serve as a model or a guideline for the town for future development. Additionally, with respect to affordable housing in Redbrook, we have the Affordable Housing Lottery for Cranberry Cove. That is coming up. We will have, there are three units, 23, 27, and 35, Cranberry Farm Road. These are three four-bedroom, single-family homes for sale at $349.5 with a $245 a month HOA fee. The public information session is February 27th at 6:00 PM, that is via Zoom. The application deadline is March 24th at 2:00 PM, and the lottery will be held April 8th at 6:00 PM via Zoom. For more information, please go to the website at, and I'm going to find it here to make sure I get it right, www.sebhousing.com. Any further announcements, members of the board? Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda. First, we have a presentation from the Open Space Committee. Good evening, Deb.
Good evening, everybody. It's so great to be here. First of all, thank you so much for this opportunity to talk about one of my favorite topics, the Open Space Committee. And the timing is perfect, because as you all are wrapping up the visioning sessions for the, for the master planning process, the ones that I've attended, and I've tried to attend a lot of them, the way people value, in this community, value open space really came through loud and clear. So this is a nice way to just show how the Open Space Committee is supporting what, what's become a very highly valued element of our community. So let's get started. And first of all, I want to, well, I want to figure out how to work the remote here, first of all. How do I do that?
You have a master screen scroll.
Scroll. Oh, okay.
There we go.
There you go. Sorry, I was clicking. Okay, so here we are. Who are we? We are nine fabulous people, and some of us are here in the room today. We have Steph Silva, who is the chair of the committee. Andrea Dickinson is also here. Diane Peck is the co-chair. Brian Harrington, Mr. Bulletin is a member of the Open Space Committee, Bruce Howard, Lois Post, myself, John Hammond, who's a little camera shy, as you can see, and Patrick Farah, who's a member of the Planning Department. He's our support staff. He calls himself support, but he does, he does quite a bit of work and contributes quite a lot to the committee. I will make, as I was driving here tonight, I realized that the last time I was at this podium was when you all appointed me to the, to the Open Space Committee. So for that, I'm forever grateful. Thank you for that. All right, so let's take a look at our mission. The Open Space Committee plays an advocacy role in the community. So our mission is to advocate for the preservation and maintenance of natural open space for current residents, as well as for future generations, in order to protect our aquifer, our environment, and the character of our town. So that's a very long-winded way of saying we are interested in open space for its environmental value, as well as for its recreational value and enjoyment of the community. So what does that look like on a day-to-day basis? So I'm going to share a couple of our, some of our accomplishments, and you'll see that the date here is from 2017 to present, and that, that seven-year period represents the, the last time we were involved in updating the Open Space and Recreation Plan. So that's something that the state requires us to do, that every community to do every seven years. So we just finished that exercise, and this will keep us eligible for state funding for a variety of our projects and initiatives across the town, not just with our committee. So we did a look back for seven years to identify some of the accomplishments of the Open Space Committee, and that's what I'm going to share with you here tonight. So one of the, the main initiatives that we, we have undertaken is to acquire land for conservation purposes. So we have acquired, in just the past seven years, we've acquired 488 acres via tax title conveyance, and that land has gone into various conservation areas, as well as some passive recreation areas that we'll talk about in a minute. We also do quite a bit of trail work. We have a very active trails working group, and you can see them here ascending from the heavens up, up one of the trails. But just in the past seven years alone, they've completed 60-plus work projects, clearing, clearing trails and creating new trails throughout the community. They've also undertaken a trail camera project to monitor trail use, and they've gotten some interesting data that suggest ways that we can improve the, the trails and the activity and the way that we encourage people to use those trails. And they also get involved in various different projects and initiatives throughout the community, such as planting seagrass and building benches and other, and other things to beautify and make the, make the trails more enjoyable. The Open Space Committee also plays a big educational role in the community. Every week, every year, we conduct two community hikes. They're guided hikes. They're free to the public. So in the past seven years, we've, we've done 14 of those. You'll see us out and about in town at the various environmental events that happen, the Herring Festival, the Library Garden Festival, and different things like that. We'll have a table and booths, and we'll, we'll do some outreach at those kinds of events. One, one initiative that we started about a year or so ago was partnering with the library and the public school system to create some story walks for children along some of our trails, and those have been very popular. So we'll continue to do that in the, in the coming years, probably in the spring and the fall. You'll see some more of those from us. You will also see us promoting pollinated gardens. You'll see them starting to pop up around town, and we'll have some educational information around those and native planting support. We're, we'll also, we also have some publications that promote, promote that in, across the community as well. I mentioned earlier that we have been involved in an Open Space and Recreation Plan update, and a big part of that effort was to conduct a community survey. And that was an amazing communication and education opportunity for us. It was a way for just conducting the survey itself as a way to show the community, hey, this is something that we're interested in, and we want to know what you think about that. Give us some feedback. So that was a wonderful two-way communication channel. I do have a couple of slides of data that I'll share with you in a minute. We also produce a number of publications. So if Plymouth had a bestseller list, this little trail guide would be on it. We have distributed thousands of these throughout the community. They're very popular. They're also available online, and they, they're really a wonderful description and maps of some of the more popular trails in, in town. So that's available online. We have an invasive plant guide that we produce that, that also is very popular, and people use that to help guide. I used it myself on my own property to help, help, help us design some of the landscaping that we were doing when we were, when we were upgrading that. We're very big on promoting some of the Chapter 61 conservation programs. If people are not familiar with those, that's a state-run program where people that, people who own large acreage of property, I think it's five contiguous acres, if they agree to put some of that into, protect that from development for a certain number of years, they can get a, a break on their property taxes. So we, we promote that, and we try to encourage people who are able to do that to consider it. Promoting hikes, and we have websites that we update with lots of information, too. So very active in education and publications. The advocacy role we play, we really are strong advocates of supporting the enforcement of existing environmental regulations, such as sand and gravel removal, or clearcutting, and those kinds of things. So we'll, we'll try to keep an eye on some of those, those activities across town. We do get involved in the tax title property assessments, the Chapter 61 donations, as I mentioned, as, as well as promoting better ways to connect the trails throughout and across town. We don't do this alone. We have a lot of partnerships, and we're working in collaboration with a number of different environmental groups across, across the community. And what's wonderful about that, you can see them, some of them listed here, is that we have a lot of people in the town that have the same interests and share the same goals. And being able to partner with them more effectively and efficiently, we can just pool our, pool our resources and do even more for the community than, than we're able to do as individual committees. So that's, that's been very helpful. Now, what did I do? All right. So I did, I mentioned the, the survey that we conducted as part of the Open Space and Recreation Plan update, and I just wanted to share two of these slides, because I think that they're very important and relevant to the work that the master planning process has, has undertaken. So we asked, one of the questions we asked the community was, how important is it for Plymouth to provide and maintain open space for these reasons? And we prompted them with these reasons, but you can see, everything is important. But the top five are all related to environmental protections, and that's what people value a lot when, when they, when they think about open space. The community also provided some of their priorities for planning for the future when it comes to open space. So at the top of the list, they, we're encouraging us to try to control development, acquire and maintain more open space and conservation land. And then it starts to fall down a little bit in protecting the water supply, providing more indoor and outdoor recreation options, and making Plymouth more walkable and bikeable. So that was from the community through that survey. And then a final thought from, from one of our constituents, someone that responded to the survey, and we thought that this, this quote summed up the, what, the sentiment of the community when it comes to open space. Plymouth is incredibly unique in its offerings. Oceans, lakes, cranberry bogs, hiking trails, golfing, downtown neighborhoods, keep the diversity of what is available. This is a huge part of the draw. So it's really clear that, that the community considers open space a big part of the identity of Plymouth, and as the Open Space Committee, we're really excited that we're, we'll do whatever we can to, to make sure that we, we fulfill that, that commitment. And I don't know what I just did there, but there we go. Now, now we're watching, we're watching television, and now we're, we're back to the presentation, and here we are, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open it to the members of the board. Any questions or comments for Ms. Ayakinto? Mr. Grandy?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, I just want to thank the entire Open Space Committee for putting together this presentation and all the hard diligent work that you do for the town of Plymouth. All of your aspects within this are things that I strive for also, as far as the protection of the aquifer, the character of the town, the environment, all of these things come into play, when balanced with development. When people own land, they're able to develop per the local zoning regulations. But working together with the groups that you speak of, which I would think would also include the Community Preservation Committee on that list that I see that's not on there, do the best we can to save as much open space through regulations that we already have, like the village open space development, where you have a little more denser buildings and preserve more land. So that is a goal of not only the Open Space Committee, but it's also a goal of, I would think, this planning board itself, at least me, and I'm pretty sure a couple other members, and maybe all of them. I can't speak for them, but I just want to thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Bennett?
I do want to echo Mr. Grandy's sentiments of thanks for all your hard work. And one of the items on the, the, oh, slide number seven caught my eye, and of all of the, the ranking of how important the different, different aspects of open space are, and I wanted to kind of give you the opportunity to elaborate on one of them, which I think, I have some ideas about it, and, but that is of, of how open space helps property tax stabilization. And I'm looking for someone who certainly is deeply involved in this to perhaps educate us and those who are watching at home as to that aspect of it, because that's something we deal with here quite a lot.
Right, right.
And the more we know, the better off we are.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that the property tax stabilization was, was put in there as an option, because there are people in the community that believe that, that that does add value to the property. If there's, if they have green space around their home, if they have, if they have a nice, you know, a yard, that sort of thing. I think that there's a, there's a belief that that improves the, you know, the, the value of their property.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to get out there.
Yeah.
For, for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Then from myself, the Open Space Committee, I've had the now privilege of working with, and excited for every meeting, because there's such energy, such vibrancy, so many great ideas, and people bouncing thoughts off of each other. It's a really wonderful group. And I think one of the important things that we want to accomplish as a board here in asking the Open Space Committee to come and chat with us, is to learn from you what you're seeing and what you're hearing in the community, but to say as well, come back anytime and let us know. If there's things that you're hearing that we can do something about, we want to know it. Our committees, then that includes our village steering committees, and all of the entities that you've listed as being partners with the Open Space Committee are the eyes and ears of the town. We are six people up here, trying to cover 103 square miles. It's a daunting task. We need everybody's assistance to let us know what's going on so that we can do the best job that we can, and try and help move the ball forward, to try and accomplish these values that our community is talking about. And this is, again, one element of the upcoming master plan, but at the same time, land use is, in essence, our master plan. How we use land will be the crux of how we plan for the future. And open space is clearly an exceptionally valuable portion of that planning. We, as a community, have preserved more land than any other town in the Commonwealth. At the same time, there's still more to preserve and more to protect, and we need to do that. And we need to also make sure that just because something is preserved and placed in conservation, it's still not subject to attack. And ultimately, we still have, as you look at slide number seven, number one, water quality protection. Our aquifer is job one, and that's something that this board is very conscious of, and we want to make sure the community is conscious of it, and we want to know what we can do to help do that. So this is an open invitation to the Open Space Committee. Please come before us again. We'll, we'll invite you back as time goes on, but don't necessarily wait for the knock on the door. Feel free to let us know.
Okay, be careful what you ask for, Mr. Bulletin, because we will be back, and we'll bring our friends.
We have no fear. Thank you so much. Thank you for this great presentation.
Thank you all.
We appreciate it.
And he didn't ask you any trigonometry questions.
No trigonometry questions. That was a threat, but luckily, it didn't happen.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda this evening, we have B543 Redbrook, discussion of a proposal to fulfill the commitment of affordable housing at Redbrook.
Hey, I need glasses.
This guy right here?
No, not that one.
Before I begin, if, if anyone liked paper copies on the board, I have paper copies if you guys would like them.
I just see some old faces.
He doesn't like the old faces?
No. Not a problem.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, the members of the board, and staff. My name is Dan Gorsuga, Vice President of ADM Agwam Development. I'm here this evening to formally request the board to approve the reallocation of five existing affordable lots to future use areas within Redbrook, and then also to provide you a path forward on what we consider as options to fulfill the remaining affordable commitment. So just to orient everyone in the room, if you're familiar with Redbrook, we're off of Bourne Road. Here's River Runway, and then Wareham Road runs up and down the page. The two neighborhoods that we have unfinished affordable lots are in Use Area 10 and Use Area 11. To my right here, you see Use Area 10. That's right off of Wareham Road and Garden Road down in this area, and then the other neighborhood, Use Area 12, which is further to the south town in this neighborhood here. In the two recent Use Area approvals, Use Area 10 and 11, we proposed five income-restricted lots approved by the Planning Board on August 10th, November 9th of 2021. However, these homes remain unbuilt due to challenges that we'll discuss. Our memo that we submitted to the town, to the Planning Board was to formally request reallocating those to future use areas within the Redbrook community. Affordable housing faces rising financing costs, construction expenses, ongoing maintenance burdens, and utility costs, making larger freestanding affordable homes frankly unsustainable. Collectively, these factors create substantial barriers for individuals and families seeking affordable housing solutions. Reallocation of these lots to market rate will expedite the neighborhood completion and enhance the residents that there now quality of life. This proposal has broad support for the Redbrook, from the Redbrook Advisory Committee and residents of these neighborhoods. Given these challenges, we propose the reallocation of these five unbuilt lots, and then fulfilling that housing commitment in future use areas. With that said, this slide represents the status of where we are today as far as affordable housing. If you recall, per our special permit, our initial commitment was 103. As part of the Use Area 15 approval, which was the senior affordable housing project, we agreed to do 10 additional more for a total commitment of 113. Currently, under any phasing of permitting construction and marketing or what have you, we have 82 of them, which leaves us a remaining of 31 affordable lots, or units, I should say. So we have just two options, concepts that we would like to share with the board. Frankly, we understand these concepts will require further conversations with the board, community stakeholders, our advisory committee, other town members as well. But we wanted to take this opportunity just to prevent some of these concepts to you. Excuse me. So the first one is, we have a slightly different vision from the normal approach to, when it comes to ownership of affordable housing. After talking to some community members and some of yourselves, we have a concept of a compact, efficient home on smaller lots with that reduced development and maintain, maintenance costs, while increasing what we think the pool of the accessibility for more buyers. Smaller homes are easier to maintain, more energy-efficient, financially sustainable, helping homeowners long-term, build long-term stability while minimizing, you know, environmental or development impacts. In partnership with the Planning Board and staff, we plan to we plan to induce introduce a thoughtfully designed neighborhood featuring about six duplex style homes, creating up to 12 affordable units. These homes are approximately 1,000 square feet apiece. Will be available to buyers in that 70 to 80% area median income range. So the next slide is the concept of this right now. The concept rendering brings life to a new community, again approximately 12 units, 12 homes placed in for a compact and efficient living. This area, for those that aren't familiar, this is right next to River Runway. So Bourne Road is our, the main town road and you come off into River Runway. For those that are familiar, River Runway, you're kind of hanging out at grade and then you come down in the bottom. And at the bottom of the hill, which is right here, you cross that, across that area, it was our Use Area 8. Those homes there ranged from 9 to 1,200 square feet, smaller, single family homes, and we're proposing something similar scale size as far as 1,000 square feet right across the street. They're close from a proximity standpoint, right up the road. If you go left of the page, right up the road is our Village Common, our Village Center with the meeting house, the commercial building, the YMCA and such. Again, the community gardens up there, the playground. We just think it's a good walkable location. There's already a trailhead here today. And what we would end up doing is that trailhead would now become that road. And then at the end, having a cul-de-sac for obviously emergency vehicles, turnarounds, and then that trailhead would continue. The other option that we want to get in front of the board, if you recall, and Mr. Bolton brought it up earlier, in April of '24, a town meeting, town meeting approved $4 million of CPA funds to go to a 62 unit deeply affordable senior housing project at Redbrook, all 100% affordable. And they had ranges of 30% AMI, 60% AMI and 80% AMI. I will say initially, that project was met with some concerns. The project is now, in my opinion, and listening to people, is now widely recognized as a vital benefit to Plymouth, the Redbrook community, and more importantly, the local seniors that may be in need. Building on that success, success, excuse me, one of our options in our path forward is to develop frankly, another similar program of a multifamily building. Right now, in conversations that we've been having, we're thinking it could comprise about 35 to 40 units. Again, with the anticipation of having that range of area median income with some at 30, 60 and 80. We do look forward to collaborating again with our residents, our community stakeholders, our advisory committee, your board to refine those project details and locations. But we wanted you to be aware, that's where, that's in the forefront of our minds. As you are aware, though, the success of a project of this scale, it relies on strong local and state support to get those AMIs down to where we all would like them to be. And our plan is we'll engage the appropriate people and officials, both locally and state, to discuss that. And then obviously, as time goes on, be talking to this board and providing those updates. So in addition to the two concepts slash proposals that we outlined, we acknowledge the current need for affordable housing within Redbrook. And to further demonstrate our commitment to affordable housing, we propose the following course of action to the town in the unlikely event that we do not fulfill our affordable commitment. And that constitutes of three different things. That would be a land contribution. It would be a transfer of development rights. Those would be specifically used offsite, not part of Redbrook, but to be used offsite and then also a letter of credit equivalent to a certain dollar amount per affordable unit. And we believe with those offerings, the town, in the unlikely event that we didn't do it or just one day left, that the town would be able to partner with another entity to ensure the completion of those remaining affordable units within the Redbrook community. It's important to note those units would be in Redbrook. They were tied into the water and wastewater systems that are there today. And as you guys know, with water being done and expanded and wastewater nearly complete and expansion, those two systems are full size built out, large enough to handle all the units there. So in summary, we request tonight for those five income restricted lots for Use Area 10 and 11 to be reallocated to future use areas. I think we've create, we proposed two creative and unique affordable housing options. And again, can't stress enough, we look forward to collaborating with everybody. Redbrook residents, our advisory committee, Planning Board and other officials. And I would just leave with if the town, if this is something when you're reviewing that you're open to our proposal as far as the unlikelihood that we don't fulfill our commitment. What we, what our goal would be is we'd obviously prepare all the necessary documents. We also understand that that's a formal Planning Board review and approval would be required. And our goal, as we continue forward with different use areas, our goal would be to finalize those agreements and have those approved. So I appreciate taking the time to listen to me again. And we're happy to look forward to moving forward together and completing these commitments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorsika. I'm going to send it to staff first.
Thank you. What I see what you have before you is addressing three points. It's addressing a concern that we've heard from the existing established communities over those five home lots that were designated as affordable lots but have been sitting stagnant. They are in various stages of construction and posing potential quality of life and safety concerns for those existing residents. So this reallocation plan would solve that problem. And in addition, you have some options for different types of affordable housing that we don't often see, whether it's the smaller footprint or the sort of apartment style mixed income. That is something that is needed in the community and would be a good introduction to see this. And then lastly, there is the opportunity for, if you will, a surety in the event that ADM were to unfulfill the units that are required. There is an option before you to consider that would provide you that surety to make sure that these, the commitment could be fulfilled. So it is an interesting and staff thinks an appropriate proposal for you to start as a starting point for what you would like to see to make sure that the commitment is filled in an appropriate manner.
So just to clarify, tonight before us, the only issue is whether or not we're voting, we'll vote on the reallocation, correct?
That is correct. And if you have any thoughts to share on the proposal for moving forward for what that real allocation for the fulfillment of all of the units will be, we encourage you to provide that feedback.
Okay, very good. What I'm going to do first is I'm going to open it up to public comment solely on the reallocation of the five units. That's the issue tonight for public comment. Because the other ideas are just that. They're ideas, things that will be subject to public comment when there's greater detail. So first, with respect to the proposal to reallocate the five units, do I have anybody in the room who would like to speak to that? Seeing no one, is there anyone on Zoom? Oh, excuse me, I do have someone. Please come forward, introduce yourself.
Yes, hello, I'm Sam. I live in Redbrook. I don't live in the specific communities, the neighborhoods, I should say. But when I'm on the resident advisory committee, I'd say that when we talk to residents of those particular communities, they're very, or neighborhoods, they're very supportive of this. As you know, the one of the neighborhoods have unfinished lots. Outside of being unsightly, they're, they pose some safety hazard. So the going is, is that if they can build the house in whichever way they can do it, that's, that would be the most appropriate measure to move forward.
Thank you. Please.
Good evening. My name is Charles Roy. I live at 14 Towering Trees Road. My property abuts one of the undeveloped properties, which is a chain look, a chain link fence, unfinished foundation. I, for one, have lived with it for about a year and a half and would like to see it finished. So I have no animosity against any of the developers, builders, but I think it's incumbent that we do finish the property and finish the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, anyone on Zoom?
If anyone on Zoom would like to address the board, please signal by raising your hand. Seeing no one.
Great. I'm going to then bring it back to the board. First, on the issue of the reallocation. Questions for the applicant? Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so that, to make sure that I understand this clearly, so the, the, those vacant foundations, the lots that are being reallocated, those would now become market rate? Is that, is that how this is?
Yes, that's our intention.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, but I wanted to clarify. So certainly for the gentleman that spoke up. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Higgins?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Grandy?
Thank you. Through the chair, I have a couple of questions. Transfer in these six is the total?
Five.
And we turn that into 12. Where does the 12 affordable if we decide to vote to approve this? Where's the following your equation of numbers here? So are we talking about taking 12 away from the 31?
Nope. So the 12, and sorry, I did not specify that when I was going through the numbers. The 31 that are remaining is assuming those five have to be made up. So it's, we're not adding five to the 31. The 31 frankly assumes that those five now become market rate.
Okay, so let's go through it. Use Area 6, you say you get two under construction?
Yep.
Use Area 7, 1 and 2 completed and occupied, 15. Use Area 12, 3, advertising now for the applicants. And Use Area 15, the 62 is pending the state funding, which I'm hearing has been approved. So that's 82 total, leaving the 31. So again, those 12 that you'll be building in this group are coming off of the 31? Yes or no?
I, I think he's referring to the proposal for option one.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, so to fulfill the 31?
That's what we're discussing now, right?
Well, right now, we're just discussing the five.
Right. But he wants to switch to this, so that relates to the five.
Yes, absolutely. So the two, the two options that we provided, those 12 would be part of that 31.
Right. So if I deduct 12 from the 31, obviously that's what's remaining.
Correct.
Right? So you, to get into the other options, it's just a mixture of everything. But I just wanted to find out if those 12 are going to come off that 31? And are these going to be under construction permitted immediately?
So we, we would have to come in front of this board first with the Use Area approval.
Right.
And then start the normal process of.
Review, review of the drainage, review of everything that comes into play for this new.
So realistically, Tim?
Yeah.
So it's now February. I've just engaged a surveyor and the engineer to go out, survey and start the permit drawings. Typically, two or three months to get that compiled, submit to the board, wait a month, have the hearing, then wait an appeal period because it is a definitive subdivision. So right there, you're looking at three, four, five, five-ish months before an actual physical approval. And then we could start site work as far as roadway construction.
Okay. Next question is the neighborhood that's across the street. Are they aware? Are they aware of the neighborhood across the street of this potential development?
So the neighborhood, we, when we formally submitted the memo to the town, I sent a broader community message with the attachment of our memo, letting people know that if you are in those areas, we will be reaching out to have sit downs and conversations. I can tell you, the intent when that neighborhood went in with that builder at that point in time, we always talked about going across the street with him potentially. So I could say with pretty good confidence that most of those residents, unless it might be a resale or two throughout the years, most of those residents are aware that we planned on developing across the street. As far as the affordable component, they're hearing about that the first time when I sent them an email a couple of weeks ago.
And these are going to be a mixture, or is it going to be 80 AMI, 80% AMI? Or is it going to be less than 80 on this?
These would just be proposed to meet our requirement, which from a housing, it's between 70 and 80. Because you're trying to give yourself that range of potential buyers.
Okay. I have other questions in relation to your other options here, but that doesn't relate to the swapping of the locations of the five that you're discussing. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Donaldson?
Mr. Bennett asked my, my question. One of my questions. And Mr. Grandy handled the, the math part that I needed. So I'll just, we'll just defer. I think I'm going to have more things to say in the proposal aspect.
Thank you. Very good. And I'm good in terms of my understanding of these issues, so I have no questions. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the reallocation of the five units from affordable to market rate.
Motion so made.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second then, Mr. Chair.
Fine. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Donaldson?
So after doing the math, and we still have some other units that are affordable that need maybe build, why? I'm just not understanding why are we taking them from those, those neighborhoods and creating the 12 somewhere else? Why isn't it just like another proposal to just ask for your 12 units where you want to put them and still have the obligation to build the ones that are in, that are in those other neighborhoods? And I, and I understand that it's been a while and it's been hard to figure out and you're trying to do X, Y, Z. But as as a planner, it feels more, not bait and switch, but kind of that way, you know, you're, you still have, going to have a requirement to have those other units to be built. Why not fulfill the obligation of the ones that were already designated where they are? That's where I'm, I'm not seeing the light. So I don't, I don't know if someone, maybe someone on the board can help me with that or staff or?
So maybe I'll just take a stab at part of it. So one of the challenges we have all the time in a neighborhood like this is that a 2,000 square foot house as affordable is a real challenge for somebody on a limited income to maintain. They also have association fees that get added to that cost. So, and then you have that 80%. So we find that when we try to market and get people to actually go into one of these homes, it's, it's a real challenge. It's a lot of house with limited income and the homeowner association fees have to come off. It, it just poses a lot of different challenges. And, and that's why I think it has to be a different model than trying to do it that way.
If I can ask, Mr. Gorsika?
I just wasn't sure if I could talk because you guys motioned and I didn't know the rules.
If I'm, if I'm correct, in one of those neighborhoods, one of the affordables was fully built out and marketed and you were unable to get a qualified buyer. Is that correct?
So I, I don't want you to be under that assumption. What happened in that situation, it was fully built. Candidly, the time it was taking from a regulatory process and getting just state approval became not ideal for the situation we're in. So at that point in time, we requested to swap it for one for the other. So I don't want you to think that that went to market. It did not. I, I want to make sure I'm answering your question. We're not proposing to not do those five. We're just asking to do them elsewhere. I just don't want you to think we're just not doing the five.
Oh, no, I, I get that. I get that.
Okay. So one, I'm not going to repeat what Lee said, but that's part of it. And then the other thought we did think about was what the state wants to see on a regulatory perspective when you're doing affordable housing in a neighborhood. They want it to look and feel the same as everything else. The model that we're proposing with those 12 doesn't. So I couldn't just put that in that neighborhood. Because that would look completely different than the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay, so what you're supposed to put in that neighborhood is supposed to look like that neighborhood and fall under the affordable umbrella, if I sort of say.
All three or four bedroom houses, these would have to be three or four bedroom houses. You can do, for example, a two. You probably could get away without doing a garage. But again, they have to, the exterior, you can have interior finishes that are different. So maybe you have lower quality finishes in the, in the house. But the exterior has to look the same as the rest of the neighborhood. And that's, that's part of the challenge when, when you're in a neighborhood like this.
Okay, thank you. Let me say, I, I appreciate. Let me say, I, I appreciate the residents of Redbrook who've come out to talk about this tonight. I've gone to Redbrook and spoken to residents, including gotten a tour from residents of both of those neighborhoods who were very anxious to see these units completed. And I can, having walked past these various lots and started construction, I understand exactly what their sentiment is. So I think that it is best that we accomplish what the residents of those neighborhoods need and try and obtain affordables that are truly more affordable for those who are trying to encourage to come to Redbrook. That's just my comment on the subject. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor? Raise your hand, please. All opposed? It is four to one, with the alternate also indicating he would vote in favor were his vote to count. Let's move next now to the concepts that we are being presented with respect to options for completing the affordable. So let me ask one question, because I think one of the issues that Mr. Grandy was raising is, right now, assuming everything goes fine with Grantham and we're set, you have 31 remaining affordable units as you're obligated to do. You're proposing two different options. One is a 12-unit option, and the other is a 35 to 40 unit option. Are these mutually exclusive? Are you planning on doing both? Could you explain--
Sure.
Those numbers?
So the 35 to 40, what I want to be clear on, that's all about economy and scale and how the program works. What I mean by that is, if, if we did a similar Grantham model, because they are getting state funding, but they're also taking on traditional debt. So there is a certain amount of revenue versus debt that they have to achieve to one. Obviously, there is profit to be made there. They are running properties, but they'll also cover that debt service. And so in those conversations, the minimum that they would like to do is 35 to 40. The other, the other area that we propose 12, we're just trying to propose two different styles, not just all multifamily. When you ask the question if those are all inclusive, like both, or one, or either or, frankly, I, I would like to hear the opinion on the board on that. We, we are comfortable enough to say we would like to pursue both, but we understand the unit count. Now, they're all, all income restricted, they're all affordable, they're not market rate. But I will tell you, to do a model like the 30, 60, and 80, that's the minimum number that they need to be able to do. Now, that doesn't mean we couldn't do the 12 duplexes, and what's the difference, 31 and 12, 19, right? Is that, did I do my math right?
Nineteen.
Plus or minus? We could potentially look at a 19-unit multifamily building, but I will tell you right now, you're not getting 30% AMI or 60% AMI unless town and state basically would fund the entire thing, just because it just wouldn't work. So it's all about balancing the needs of our community at Redbrook, our commitment, and also the town's needs. So I'm open to, again, this was a starting point, and this is why we wanted to do it. I think it's a good starting point to have those conversations.
So with that said, I guess my question is, let's say hypothetically, this board were to say, gee, we'd really like to see those 12 units, that's a, then what's the plan for the remaining 19?
Yeah, so what I just said, we could, I would still, candidly, my own opinion, because I think the Grantham model is ideal for everybody. I would be, candidly, I would love to just put that forward to the board in addition to those 12. Again, I, understanding the unit count, I understand that. But that's what I would do. Or we could look at the 19 potentially as just a standalone multifamily building. But again, it would, we would not be able to get down to that 30 or 60% AMI. We could look at doing more duplexes instead, but I really think, I'm very biased to the Grantham model. I know it was a long time, but I really think when you look at the math and you look at incomes versus rents, we all know 80% is a stretch to say it's affordable to people that are either on a single income or making frankly less than $100,000 a year. So I'm a huge proponent of that 30, 60, 80 model. And if that means I'm having conversations about that unit count strictly changing because it's affordable, I am more than willing to have those conversations.
So again, I just want to clarify, you're right, that right now, we have a locked-in number with respect to total unit count. If this board were to be inclined, with public input, more specifically, the input of the residents of Redbrook, if this board were to be inclined to increase that unit count solely for additional affordables, is that something that you're telling me that makes peace is willing to consider?
Yeah, we would.
Okay. Let me, again, I'll bring it back to the board again for other questions. Mr. Grandy?
Okay. A couple of options you're displaying here this evening. One of them would be 100, who set the number of 125,000 per affordable unit?
Yeah, so we--
If you didn't, or were unable to put them in the make piece, you wanted to give a bond or a cash bond of some type for 125,000 per unit?
Yeah, so what--
Who sets that number?
So what we did, we looked at, essentially, the way we modeled it internally, looking at a neighborhood like this, we see on the screen, the cost of land, roadwork, building costs, the sales price. And I, we can share the numbers and our assumptions, but what we boil down to, when you give the land away for free, and you have some cash on the table bringing to the door to start the project, versus what you're getting back in return from the sale price of the affordable unit and the cost of construction, plus when you add in the potential for a developer to take 35 TDRs to increase his density somewhere else in that market value, we think it's adequate. But I'm more than willing, we can share, however you guys want to go about looking at the numbers, I can share you the equations, show you exactly how we came up with those.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing that, because in, you know, you know I'm in construction, so--
Yeah, 100%.
A thousand-square-foot home at $300 a square foot is $300,000 without the land, without the soft costs, without the architecture, without the road improvements, if any required, would be added to the equation. So I'd be interested in seeing who, how that 125 has been determined.
Okay, okay.
As far as that option is concerned. And I also lean toward what Mr. Wallerton was talking about. If you're going to put the 12, we're going to have 12 units by moving the five, which reduces your number to 19 remaining. And you say, in order for a group like Grantham to be even interested to get the AMIs down at 60, 50 maybe, whatever the numbers are, it's a minimum of, you said 40 units was the minimum?
Thirty, they said 35 to 40, so I'd just say minimum 35.
So if another group came along, and they worked with the, with you, with the people that live within the development, and the number increased by another 21 to 40 as far as affordable housing is concerned, I would hope that would be something. We're going to see with the one that you're doing now. But what I don't want to do is wait four years down the road for these affordable units to actually come to fruition as you're trying to complete the rest of the development within AD make piece. Because initially, obviously, we felt a little behind as far as building the affordable units within the development. So that's something I want to avoid going forward.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
I totally understand, and I will be 100% open and honest in my opinion. To obtain another model like Grantham, that's not going to happen overnight, and you're probably looking at a two-year process. So again, we're weighing out, weighing out those couple things of, one, doing it sooner rather than later, but getting the most benefit for the town. And open to all those conversations. Ideally, I would proceed with those 12, and I would still pursue the larger project with a Grantham-style model. To your point, it's going to take time to do that. And that's part of why, again, with the assuredly of like, hey, we're not going to just get up and leave. We know we're going to do this. But I really think a project like that is most beneficial to the town.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question is, do you have potential locations for this Grantham model within Redbrook?
Yeah, so right off my top of my head, ideally, and I know this may, whatever, but I think an ideal location is still behind our meeting house, at a smaller scale than what initially proposed. I think that's a great location. Another potential location which we're evaluating is potentially next to where they're going now. That is more challenging from a grading perspective, but those are the two that come off the top of my head with the Grantham-style model. And the only reason why I wouldn't suggest elsewhere further away from the properties, and for those, if you don't mind, I can just scroll to here for a second. So we're talking, I know this is hard to see, I'm sorry, but here's the, the four-way intersection of River Runway and Wareham Road. The meeting house is right here. The Grantham is going right here. With this clientele or this demographic, Grantham Group was adamant, we cannot be far away from stuff. So there is land further southeast, but I don't think that land and location would serve this demographic. So those are the two immediate locations that we have in mind. And what our goal is, and our plan is to, and we have a consultant working on renderings right now, is to then reach out to not only their advisory committee, but reach out to those stakeholders that are very close nearby, to then sit down and essentially review a couple of different options with them.
Okay, thank you, because it's, it's important that there are amenities that are close by and in walking distance. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Bennett?
So Dan, it sounds to me like, a little too close there, that your preference would be the Grantham model. I think you made that pretty clear. I honestly, at the start of this, didn't really have a preference either way, but I think I'm perhaps coming around to your side. I'm wondering, and I, I came into the board a little late in the Grantham--
Correct.
--approval process. Now, if I remember correctly, the town kicked in a substantial amount of money to make that project happen as well. Is that correct?
Correct. So the CPA, CPC and town meeting, four million, and then Affordable Housing Trust was 100,000. So 4.1.
Say that again?
4.1 in total from the town, and then I, I won't put a value to the land for this conversation, but then we've also agreed to gift them the land, and then we're doing the initial site clearing, getting the site pad ready, and providing the utility connections. So in reality, forget land for one second, even though there is a value to it. In reality, we're probably at like four and a half-ish million between efforts from the town and then ourselves. And then if you add in land value, you're adding even more. So again, it's a significant commitment from all parties involved.
Understood. So, so would a future Grantham model also require that kind of cash input from town or whatever agency?
Initial conversations with 35 to 40 units, their total combined ask from the town, it looks about three and a half million.
Pretty soon, you're talking real money. I said, pretty soon, you're talking real money. Okay, and for the other option, the duplexes, would we be looking at a contribution from the town for that as well?
Not if we, if we're going to just keep it at 80% AMI, no.
Okay. So the contribution from the town, just to clarify for all of us, is that--
To get that subsidy.
--that is what gets it down to the 60 and the 30, rather than just the 80% that is just, as you said, is quasi-affordable, I guess? Okay, that answers my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Donaldson? I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. Mr. Gorsuch, I had a nice conversation earlier today, and I want to thank you for taking that time to educate me on Redbrook. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I've asked the question as to how do you get to the total number, whatever that total number is. Currently, as you say, 31. Ultimately, conceivably more if that's something that the community and at Redbrook and this board want to do. I echo Mr. Grandy's sentiment, which is, to some degree, we want to make sure that having moved Redbrook as a community and the affordables back to a track that we're comfortable with, we continue on doing that, which is why I certainly encourage the idea of the 12 compact units as something that can be undertaken almost immediately in a comparative planning term. Meaning that obviously, as Grantham is now hopefully underway, that can also be underway, and we can bring the Redbrook totals up to a number that we're even more comfortable with, and managing just a 31 remaining number. I obviously have, I've supported the Grantham model. I, I continue to support the Grantham model. I obviously, at the same time, though, have concerns with the need for the town ask. That's for the town to decide. That's for our CPC and our town meeting members to ultimately determine. And that's why we ultimately do have the concern that depending on town's finances, that money just simply may not be in the cards. And that's a possibility we must face, and therefore, we don't want to be putting all of our eggs in the Grantham basket, the Grantham model basket. So I will, again, echo Mr. Grandy's sentiments, which is to say that I have faith in Make Piece's obligations, intend to complete its obligations, but one must always prepare for the possibility that that doesn't happen. I don't want the residents of Redbrook or the town to be left in a worse position because we were lenient in the past. So my feelings, again, from a planning standpoint, are that I'd like to see units continue to be developed. So the compact housing model appeals to me. I don't have a problem with considering expanding the total unit count solely for additional affordable, if that is something that the community, the community at large, and particularly the community at Redbrook, is willing to accept. And at the same time, would like to hear other potential options, assuming that that doesn't happen, as to how we finish out those remaining 19 in a manner that best suits everyone. That's a good compromise for you as a property owner-developer, the town as the steward of all of this, and the Redbrook residents who must ultimately live with it on a daily basis. So I appreciate the first stab here, and now I ask you to go back and sharpen your pencil again, and give us the numbers, and see if we can come up with some other additional ideas. Anything else from the board? Mr. Bennett, yes?
So I think that, this is, this is how I'm feeling, is that the Grantham is in progress, and it's, we've had 4.1 million dollars plus Make Piece's contribution from, and it's CPC money, so it's not necessarily tax dollars, but it is tax dollars. Another project, very similar, with a ask of three and a half million from, I'm assuming would be CPC funds or otherwise. I think Mr. Wallerton kind of hit it on the head with having all our eggs in a Grantham-style basket might not be such a good idea, where we very definitely have a lot of other competing interests for those CPC dollars.
Understood.
So for those reasons, I, I feel I would be more comfortable with the, the six duplex 12-unit development. So just for, and as Mr. Wallerton said, I think you're going to be coming up with some, do some tweaking and maybe look at some other options. But between the two that I'm seeing here, I think that probably the preference would be for the more conventional, small subdivision style rather than the Grantham at this point. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything further from the board? Thank you for your presentation tonight, Mr. Gorsuch.
Thank you very much.
Greatly appreciated. Next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA 32--
Next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA 3284 Sawmill Aldens Reach, major modification of a comprehensive permit. And again, in this instance, we are advisory to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So...
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lloyd Geisinger, I'm the president of Thorndike Development. Thank you for taking the time. I realized as I was sitting, listening to this previous presentation, that it has to be at least three or four years, Mr. Grandy, since I've been here.
Hold on one second. We have a lot of chat going on in the room. If those who want to speak to each other, please step out of the room, because it's interfering with our ability to hear with the presentation.
And if you could pull that microphone a little closer to you, it would help, too.
How's this? Is that better?
Much better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get a restart then? Is that kind of where we are?
No, no, we're good. Go right ahead.
Well, I only know one person on the board, so that just tells me how long it's been before, since I've been here, which is shocking. COVID seems to have collapsed time, but it's been 25 years that we've been building here in Plymouth. Lee and I have both gotten much grayer, so have you, Mr. Grandy. We started out, I think it's worth taking just a moment for those of you who aren't familiar with my company, and by the way, I'm here this evening with Michael Devon and Cal Harvey from our office. Not here this evening is my partner, David Oestrich, who will be the partner in charge as we move forward with Sawmill, but he had a conflict this evening, and I will be around as well. But we started out as one of the very first builders at the Pine Hills. Tony Green drove me around in his Land Rover when there was really nothing there. We built there for 10 years. We built Summer Reach, Sawyer's Reach, we built Sandy Pine, which was an affordable community that was an offspring of the Sawyer's Reach as part of the whole discussions about how you integrate affordable housing into senior housing. We wound up building a separate 30-unit affordable community, which was 30% affordable rather than 25%. And last year, we entered into a purchase and sale agreement to acquire the final three phases of the Sawmill 40B community, the first phase of which had been built by another builder who was not moving forward, and so we have now acquired the remainder of that property and are here before you this evening to present modifications that we are bringing before the Zoning Board of Appeals that are more consistent with our new urbanism, smart growth style that Thorndike has been known for for decades. So in case you hadn't noticed, there is a continuing theme with the word "reach" in our various communities. I have to confess to being somewhat superstitious, and we built a project called Chapman's Reach at Marina Bay in Quincy, which won every award known in the nation as one of the best new urbanism communities, and so we've kind of stuck with that. It was originally a nautical term is why we were using it, but it seems to have worked out well for us, so that's kind of the derivation of that. I think everyone here is probably familiar with the location of Sawmill, but in case you're not, the property is off of Route 3A. It's accessed through the Shallow Pond Estates community. We'll talk a little bit more, a little later in the presentation, about the interface between Thorndike and Sawmill, we've been working very, excuse me, and Shallow Pond, working very closely with that neighborhood to make good on commitments that have been outstanding for, well, a very long time, almost 20 years with respect to this project. This is the existing approved subdivision plan, I should say, excuse me, comprehensive permit plan, and shown in blue is Phase 1 of Sawmill, which consists of 60 units, 30 duplex buildings, each of which has a single-car garage and three bedrooms. That phase was built by the previous builder and is complete. When we agreed to purchase the remainder of the property, keeping in mind that the current permits call for a total of 200 units, so to build out the remaining 140 units, we approached the ZBA early February of last year, requesting a minor modification for just these 18 homes in Phase 2, which we called Phase 2A, to allow us to get a jumpstart on the project while we went forward with a larger overview and major modification. We were anxious to try and be in the ground last spring, and in fact, we have 11 of these 18 homes under contract right now, so it's worked out quite well in that regard. I'll come back to this plan a little bit later, but as part of the approval that we received for those 18 units, we also presented the board with new architecture. This is a blend of two- and three-bedroom homes, in some cases, conventional townhomes side by side, in other cases, shown in this green building, which I'll talk a little bit more about later, it's a triplex in which there's a ground-level flat with a primary bedroom on the same floor as a second bedroom, targeting more of a senior, and then there are two townhouses up above with the third floor buried in the roof. We've had just tremendous success with this building model. It's an extremely efficient home. It offers three different product types within a very compact footprint, and that allows us to get our price points down and as well target a larger community. It's worth noting at this point, as you see, as you look at some of these renderings, and by the way, I should say that we have built a 3D model of the entire community. We are building this product right now. What you're looking at is accurate to an eighth of an inch. This is not, in fact, I don't have it in this presentation, but I often show a photograph of one of our projects next to the 3D model, and it's hard to tell the difference. So we are heavily into trying to create pedestrian-friendly communities, and we're also moving away from overactive adult communities, senior communities, which we've built many of, Sawyer's Reach at Behind Colony Place being the one that we finished most recently in Plymouth, but we've built many, towards a more multi-generational approach. There's certainly still very much of an interest and a need for straight senior housing, but increasingly, what we're finding is that residents, older households, are interested in not being isolated, in having the activity and vitality that comes from seeing different types of homes and households and generations living side by side. It's not for everyone, but it's something that is getting a lot of traction, it's getting a lot of traction across the entire country. We are doing it here at Aldens Reach, we're doing it in Rainham right now in a community called Larkwood, and we're having good success with it. That leads me to these next few slides, which are intended to give you a better sense of how this architecture fits together to create these pedestrian-friendly streets. There's a very heavy emphasis on creating a continuous sidewalk that's well-defined, that's separated from the road with a grass strip and street trees, so that there's a rhythm to the neighborhood and the way the streets are organized. We are very much about neighborhood as opposed to individual homes. And a couple of more shots of this that show how we've created through a proposed change in stamped asphalt and coloring to create a continuous sidewalk even across where we have the parking garages, and an interesting approach where the parking, if you're parking outside of your garage, it would be before you get to the sidewalk. I think this image in particular gives you a good sense of how this all starts to fit together to create a very pedestrian-friendly community. One more shot showing that stamped asphalt approach to differentiate and well-defined the sidewalk that I was talking about. So with that is kind of a tight view of what was discussed with the ZBA relative to that minor modification last year. We've now taken those same planning concepts and applied them to the overall community. And while the layout is very, very similar to what's currently approved, specifically, there are a series of smaller neighborhoods in the southern portion of the site, and then a long loop road that connects back up into Shallow Pond at Andrew's Way, the primary entrance being off of Kathleen Drive down here at the bottom of the page. We have successfully separated Sawmill Phase 1 into its own condominium association, and I'll talk about that a little more in a moment. We've created Aldens Reach Condominium, which would be a separate association. The architecture and the improvements are substantially different, and it seemed to make sense to create two separate condominiums. However, there is a master association that has also been established that both condominium trusts will feed into for all of the common amenities, like snow plowing and landscaping that need to be, that have common interest to be maintained. Okay. So getting into some of the particulars and the numbers, in the chart on the left-hand side of this page, there are two columns. The first column shows the status as it is currently permitted, and the second column shows what we are proposing. So with respect to the actual number of homes, in Phase 1 at Sawmill, there are, and these are built, there are 44 market rate homes, and there are 16 affordable homes, all occupied by owner occupants across all 60 homes. Obviously, in the proposed, since that's already completed, that doesn't change, which then brings us down to the next section of the chart, which is Phases 2, 3, and 4, which would now be the Aldens Reach condominium. And if we were to make no changes as permitted currently, there would be 100 and, you're doing better being able to look at your screens than I am, the screen a little far away. There'd be 106 market rate and 35 affordable. We are proposing, and I'll get into the logic of this in a moment, to increase that unit count, the overall community unit count, so that there would be 129 market rate and 43 affordable. So the unit count for the overall community would go from 200 to 232. We have, however, as I mentioned earlier, introduced a number of product types that are targeting young families as well as seniors and couples at various stages in their life cycle. So we are, we've introduced 96 two-bedroom homes, which only leaves 130 three-bedroom homes, keeping in mind that that includes the 60 three-bedroom homes that are part of Phase 1. So a very limited number of additional three-bedroom homes. That's how we get to the 232. The number of bedrooms is unchanged across the project because of the change in the mix from all three-bedroom to a blend of two and three, which is frankly very consistent with a mix that one would expect in a multi-generational community as we're trying to develop. I should mention that this project, and I'll get to this as well, but it's important here is on a private wastewater treatment facility that's 100% built and operational, and it has a capacity of 600, it's based on bedroom count, and it has a capacity of 600. So that is unchanged, and that represents a limit, unless, of course, the plant was to be expanded, which we have no plans to do. In addition to the affordable, and there was a typo, if you're looking at what was sent earlier, I guess it's still that way here, I apologize, but the actual commitment for an additional affordable payment is $330,000 per phase, not 110,000. It was 110,000 per unit times three units in each of the three subsequent phases, so a very substantial difference from what's shown on the sheet. We will send you a corrected package tomorrow. Excuse me? Yes. So originally, in the original comprehensive permit, it called for 30% affordable. The zoning board, the previous developers went back to the zoning board a few years ago, four or five years ago, and had that changed down to 25% affordable. In the process of doing that, making that change, the previous developer also agreed that for the 5% affordable units that were no longer to be built, that they would pay $110,000 for each of those affordable units. And one of those affordable units was assigned to, that wasn't built, was assigned to Phase 1, and that payment was made. There are three additional payments due, one with each of Phases 2, 3, and 4, and each of those payments is $330,000. 110,000 times three units in each case, a total of 10 units that were eliminated. And we are not proposing to change that commitment. I only changed it on the paper, which is probably what my brain wanted me to do, but that was a mistake. This is a little... Okay, sorry. Just going through a couple more of the numbers. From a parking standpoint, the Phase 1, as it was built, is very challenged for enough parking. When we got involved in the community and met with the Phase 1 folks, they were desperate for more parking. If you drive down there, the cars are somewhat scattered. They're one-car garages, but it's more challenging than that because there were tandem spaces that were considered as additional parking spaces, and of course, tandem spaces can be a little tricky when you've got two people. And so what has happened is that a number of the households wind up parking on the streets. The streets are quite narrow. It's not particularly well-laid out. We, in connection with creating the separate Sawmill condominium, agreed to a number of improvements that were not a requirement of the permit, some of which included adding parking. So we have added several parking lots to Phase 1, which has alleviated some of the parking problem. On a go-forward basis, we've taken a very different approach to the parking requirements, as you can see in this chart. The, as permitted, if we were to go forward, the total number of spaces would be 157, which is less than one per household. We are proposing, the current plan shows two parking spaces per household, some of which are garages, some of which are dedicated parking spaces, and that's excluding any tandem spaces that occur as a result of being in front of, we're not counting those, although they are certainly very helpful for visitors and that type of thing. Every Thorndike community is, has a robust amenity package. We are very big on victory gardens and neighborhood parks, traditional neighborhood parks, and so at the bottom of this page, the current Sawmill plan had no amenities at all. We intend to build a pool and poolhouse, we have a basketball court, we have a playground, we have a victory garden, we have an open field for kids to play in, and by agreement, the Sawmill folks will be able to use those amenities as well. So just turning back to a comparison of the two plans, I think when you look at them side by side, you can see that the road network is very, very similar. It's really the application of the architecture and the treatment of those streetscapes that And of course, I can get into as much detail on any of these aspects as you like. I'm just about done here. From a circulation standpoint, when we were before the ZBA on the Phase 2A minor modification, there was some discussion about eliminating the second egress up at the top of this plan here, over here, and relying more heavily on the access down of the lower level. Shallow Pond was not particularly supportive of that idea. We also rethought it, and so at this point, we have no plans to eliminate that and intend to make that connection. We are in active conversations with the fire department. They're fully aware of this. We're working out some details with them as to interim fire safety plans that will provide two means of access along the way in each case. We have, in fact, created another connection point in this location right here that provides additional circulation. And in fact, as a result of that and a few other loose ends, we are not looking for any action from the board this evening. We would, I talked with Lee a little earlier today, and if the board has room on its, I think it's a February 26 meeting, we feel that we'll have the issues resolved with the fire department by then, as well as correct a couple of these scribness errors that I'm very... errors that I'm very embarrassed about and would propose coming back to the board at that time. At the very entrance to the property, this little stretch of road right here, when Shallow Pond was built, there was no Sawmill. And so in typical fashion, this little dead-end street received a classic cul-de-sac with a, a, a grass area in the middle. That remains to this day, and of course, it makes for a somewhat awkward circulation pattern, maneuvering around this cul-de-sac that really has no function anymore. And we have proposed reworking this short stretch of road and have spoken with the two adjacent owners and have them onboard with the change. We're still fine-tuning a couple of things. This is a, a concept plan, but this is something that would allow us to create a continuous roadway into Alden's Reach, have Sawmill tee into it in this way, and, and allow us to put signage at this connection point showing Alden's Reach heading in one direction and Sawmill in the other, and make this a more consistent treatment. We have been, before the DPW, they are familiar with this, they have, had made specific detailed comments. This little driveway shown here is actually intended to be a turnaround that was requested by the DPW so plowing trucks could make a maneuver and get back out. I spoke a little earlier about the amenity package. This is just some illustrations showing how we have it, what we have in mind. This is a village green, excuse me, a park in the center. If we go back to the plan, it's located almost dead center in, in the property, right here. So as we jump ahead and zoom in, there's a, there's a open field, there's a, a half-court basketball, there's a tot lot, there's a pool house and pool, the pool house being really a small clubhouse, not a full-blown clubhouse. And these are images from other Thorndike communities that we've built. These are victory gardens that were built at Red Mill Village in Norton, which was named best senior housing community in the nation by the National Association of Home Builders. This is a, a pool house at a community that we built with the Campanelli that built the apartments at Red Brook. And, and then, you know, again, as I mentioned, the pool house, this happens to be the, the clubhouse at Red Mill Village and great walking trails that we'll develop throughout the site. From a utility standpoint, the water loops, again, using Kathleen Drive and Andrew's Way to loop into the town system. We have updated, the Environmental Partners has done an update of the overall water study, which has been presented to the various departments and determined to be adequate, both from a pressure and, and volume standpoint. And as I mentioned before, there is a private sewage treatment facility, which is tucked away in the bottom corner in the leaching field as well. I mentioned earlier that we have been working with the Shallow Pond Estate folks. We have actually implemented a number of traffic calming measures along Kathleen Drive after working with the Shallow Pond folks. We've been a little bit challenged with the DPW on what's acceptable and what isn't. It's a little bit in flux, but there are new signs and crosswalks that have been installed. Additional work is planned as we resolve some of those issues. There's also an open question of, back up a half a step. So the comprehensive permit calls for Sawmill Development Corporation. Those responsibilities have now been taken over by Alden's Reach LLC, which is a Thorndike community, to topcoat Kathleen Drive at the completion of, of the project. The original comprehensive permit was issued in two thousand and five, so it is now twenty years and Kathleen Drive still hasn't been top-coated and only sixty homes have been We recognize that that's unacceptable. It doesn't fulfill, I don't think, the spirit of the commitment. We have been working with Shallow Pond to enhance the commitment relative to Kathleen Drive. There's been a great deal of discussion before the ZBA about trying to establish a reserve for other infrastructure issues that might come up, breaks in a water line, drainage, that type of thing. We had put forward the proposal that's in your packet of making three one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar payments into a reserve account that they could then use for infrastructure as they saw fit. The estimate for the Kathleen Drive surfacing was around three hundred thousand dollars. Those discussions are ongoing. We've gotten recent feedback from Shallow Pond, I think John Kelly, the president of Shallow Pond, is here this evening, that they don't really like the idea of just getting money, they want the road paved, and we're fine with that. So we're not there yet, but the commitment is there to work with the community to come up with a solution that's, that works for everybody. Just about done. I just wanted to circle back very quickly and talk about the commitments that we made to Sawmill as part of the separation between Sawmill and Alden's Reach. There were open permit issues that are now all closed, that we took on and completed, with the exception of topcoating the main road, which doesn't make sense to do yet because we're going to be cutting into it to make the connections. But all of the long driveways and surface areas up to the buildings have been paved. An irrigation system which had not been install, had been, not been installed, was installed and expanded. All of the lawns were refurbished through an aeration, over seeding and adding organic materials, which in combination with the irrigation system have made a dramatic difference in the enhancement. We added a whole bunch of landscaping and fencing, one example of which is shown, this is a before and after, and this is all installed and completed. So we had wanted Sawmill to agree to separate the two communities, and we felt it was appropriate for us to offer additional things as part of that process. And we've worked very closely with the board, and it was almost unanimous to ultimately create the structure that we have right now. And that is done and complete, signed a hundred percent. I think that is it. So I've just circled back to the, the overall plan. I recognize there's a lot to digest here. It's a complicated project, it's been going on for a long time. What I can tell you is that we are fully committed to building this out. We are a pace-driven company. And what I mean by that is when we have to choose between pace of sales and price, we choose pace every time. For the past ten years, over the half-dozen communities that we've completed and the thousand homes that we've built, we have averaged in excess of fifty homes per year, per community. So that's delivering a house a week. And we are, have every expectation that we will meet that, that goal as well here and, and complete this community over the next three to four years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it to staff.
So Lloyd covered quite a bit there. I'm not going to kind of go over some of the things I was going to present because he did a pretty thorough job, a very thorough job, not pretty, very thorough job of covering it. So this is a forty-B comprehensive permit. It was approved, as pointed out, over twenty years ago. You're serving in as, in an advisory capacity to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals on fortyBs acts as the one-stop permitting. So this case is a little different because it's a modification, but a forty-B, the ZBA sits as the planning board, conservation commission, board of health, and zoning board of appeals for one permit issuance on fortyBs. Again, this is a little different because it's simply a modification, but they're, they're the ones who will make the decision, you're providing advisory, a report to them. The biggest issue that we were dealing with at a staff level was the concern about water, water pressure, and whether or not these changes would affect that. So the DPW has gone through and done that analysis, and I think mainly because the bedroom count doesn't change, that doesn't really, the water flow is based on bedrooms. So they've come back and indicated that they're fairly comfortable with what's going on with the, with the water, based on the modeling they've done. The other thing I would point out is that the original proposal was for plastic pipe throughout this part of the development because the existing neighborhood has the plastic water pipe, they're going with the ductal iron, which will be a lot more durable. So again, the water issue was the big one. The other issue that's out there, and we've talked a little bit at a staff level with the Kathleen Drive, Shallow Pond Estates neighborhood, is really trying to get the two parties to work as best they can to come up with a mutually acceptable solution to the types of mitigation that this developer can provide to the existing neighborhood, Shallow Pond Estates. So I think the presentation, getting the feedback from the community and this board will be good. And again, I think our recommendation is for the, those parties to work a little harder and hopefully they can come back to it with a package that's acceptable to all parties. The zoning board is hearing this on February twenty-fourth, and as indicated, the applicant is going to go there and ask for a continuance so that they can come back to this board, clarify some of the, the errors and issues in the written documents, hopefully come back to report on the progress they've made with Kathleen Drive, and then we can then provide our recommendation, and I always do that, your recommendation, to the zoning board for their next meeting whenever they choose to continue that hearing. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'm going to open it up first to public comment. And I will note that my understanding is that there is going to be a further presentation of this project and this proposals to the Madam Met Village Steering Committee on February the twentieth, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Yes, that's absolutely correct, and thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay. So in terms of the community input, I would expect that not only tonight, this board's input in the community, but the community will have a further opportunity to go ahead and, and do that. So I appreciate the fact that you're asking us to sit tight and wait for further community involvement, because obviously, this is a longstanding challenge for the community, a, a project that has sat permitted twenty years ago and has been only partially completed through no fault of this developer, obviously, they've taken over most recently, but is not something that the community is going to benefit from. So with that, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Please come forward.
My name is John Kelly. I'll be heading up the new department, Plymouth Department of Doge. No, that's, that's not true. I'm the president of the Shallow Pond Homeowners Association. I want to thank Mr. Lloyd and his team for the good communication going back and forth. I, I don't see much sense into going into great comment because this is going to be going on and on and on. So I appreciate the board. I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself and thank Mr. Hartman for his recent communication.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, please come forward.
I'm Sally Hertz, Eighteen Penny Lane, as part of Shallow Pond Estates. This comprehensive permit is a little more, or what's happening now is a little more complicated than just approving this wonderful plan. Believe me, we are so thrilled that this neighborhood is happening and coming to fruition. The comprehensive permit has been opened, I think, six times for minor modifications. This is the first time that it's going to be open for major modifications, the ability to change language that's in the comprehensive permit. So I, I hope that you received the letter that we had sent to the zoning board of appeals, putting together what our neighborhood is requesting. We recently, over the last few years, have learned that the only access and egress to this location is over private roads owned by the residents. That includes the water mains. Very happy we've had new water tests, glad that the pressure is good, glad that there's enough flow. What happens if there is a major water break or some catastrophic issue on these roads? It needs to be taken into consideration because you now have private citizens that are, that hold the responsibility to allow those people water, not allow, to make sure that those people have water and access on safe roads to their neighborhood. It would be a good time for us to be able to look at that and make some adjustments to the comprehensive permit to address these private citizens holding that power, which we are not welcome for having, financial responsibility and safety responsibility. The reason that this happened is that the town, when the development first happened, there should have been a homeowners association that was formed, a homeowners trust. It never was. It was in the bylaws that you all have, or the rules and regulations for subdivisions, but was not put in the original plans for the, for the neighborhood. It was put in for Phase Three, which is Shallow Pond, but for some reason, it never came to be. We have no formal association trust. We have a volunteer association. We don't have the ability to accept this generous offer of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We can't manage that. We can't sign things for it. We don't have the ability to do that. We don't have the legal program. And at this point, twenty, thirty years later, we also can't make it a mandatory association. So we could form an association and hope that people might join. So as we're going through this and as we're approving, and believe me, we're all in favor of this wonderful neighborhood, we need to be able to protect ourselves and protect them. There'll be thirteen to fifteen hundred people who will, may not have water, may not have roads to be able to get in there. We also would like to take a look at, because of the easements that were granted, again, something that you might recommend to the ZBA that they look at, is that there's the dominant and servient relationships that have been built. The dominant is the neighborhood being built. They are benefiting from the easement, benefiting from being able to use our roads, and we're the servient partner, where we are not benefiting, we actually are giving the ability to go over the roads. We might want to look at whether the relationship has some responsibility legally for the maintenance and upkeep of the roads to be able to get into their neighborhood. And again, asking really for just a, you know, a proportional responsibility to pay for those, for any, any catastrophic issue that may happen. We also would love to have Thorndike help us to get the roads accepted by the town. We're working on that currently, but you know, that really can take some time. So we, this is my last comment. We aren't, as citizens, able to really negotiate what it might cost for roads. Is four hundred and fifty thousand a good amount? How do we know? We're not, we're not road engineers, we're not people that know those sorts of things. It really would behoove the town, the DPW, and the boards to get involved to say, listen, that is a good number, or no, that isn't a good number, and not leave it up to negotiations for a voluntary association, which really does ice cream socials and puts mulch at the entrance. We also, in terms of the traffic calming, we were open to and have allowed Alden's Reach to have a beautiful sign that they created, to hang on the Shallow Pond sign at the entrance to our neighborhood. And I believe there also is signage that's up on Kathleen Drive, not up yet, but they do have the ability, or the neighbors gave the ability to put that sign. So with that, I think it's a little more convoluted of a, yes, we think it's great, yes, we have enough water flow currently to go through. It really needs to be looked at as to whose responsibility the roads and the infrastructure under the roads are. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Yes, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Michael Hertz. I'm Sally's husband. I live at Eighteen Penny Lane in Shallow Pond Estates. I just want to clarify a couple of things that Sally said as far as a mandatory homeowners association. The Shallow Pond Estates is, consists of six unaccepted roads. Five of the roads were built- Five of the roads were built or, you know, put in place by Roland Leary back in the late 80s, early 90s. No formal homeowners association was formed then. The planning board, in their documentation with the new owners of Phase Three of Shallow Pond Estates, which is essentially Shallow Pond Lane, did say that a mandatory homeowners association was to be put in place, and it never was, just to clarify that. So, who owns the roads? The Shallow Pond Homeowners Association does not own the roads in Shallow Pond. Individuals own it according to the derelict fee statute in the state, which says homeowners own to the middle of the road. So, we have 179 different owners of the six roads in Shallow Pond Estates. Going to be pretty hard to corral that herd of cats if something ever needed a, you know, the major investment in repairs. Couple other points I'd like to bring up. Back in 1993, the planning board actually recommended to the ZBA to deny a comprehensive permit for 80 single-family units, 20 which were proposed to be affordable on the current location of Sawmill and Alden's Reach. And one of the concerns of the board was related to traffic safety issues in the neighborhood. So, that situation hasn't improved in the last 30 years. So it's the same roads, so those traffic safety issues still exist. And now we're looking at a 232 home, not an 80 home. Another point, on March 9th in 2005, a memo to the zoning board from the DPW commenting on the current comprehensive permit application, the DPW basically said, "The infrastructure of the subdivision roads, namely Kathleen Drive, Donna Drive, Talia Way, within the vicinity of the proposed development, will need to be improved as part of this project." So, that seems to have been overlooked. Again, Sally brought up some of the things that we're looking for with the ZBA in terms of modifications, and, you know, we'll be talking a lot more about that with the ZBA at the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
So if you're on Zoom and you want to be recognized, you need to raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone looking to be recognized.
Okay. I'm going to bring it back to the board, again, with the reminder that this is round one, and we will certainly have opportunities, again, to discuss this after there's been some more of these issues. I do want to note, I don't believe we were provided with a copy of that letter. It was not in our packet, so I would please, the staff, please circulate that to the planning board so that we can review that and be prepared to discuss those issues in future. So let me bring this back to the board for questions to Mr. Donaldson.
So I have a few questions in regards to this project. So the biggest, well, one of the things I would like to know is, have you figured out the AMI for these affordability that are going to be coming on?
These are all 80%.
These are all 80%?
Yes.
And then, is there, so what is the, have you figured a current market value rate at this time for the ones that are not affordable?
We have a website, and they're being currently marketed. Rather than, I didn't come prepared with those numbers, but if you go to aldensreach.com, all of our prices are listed there for the homes. Are you talking about the affordable homes?
No, the regular market rate.
Right, the market rate home pricing is all listed on the website, and I can certainly follow it up with a letter tomorrow, though I don't have those numbers handy.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure I have an understanding. So, unfortunately, I live two minutes from there, so I'm going to, and I am also concerned about the traffic. I also have friends that live in Shallow Pond. So Shallow Pond has, you have a right of way, or who has the right of way in getting through the community to get to your proposed projects?
So the...
Well, assessment, not, I mean, easement.
Right, so, just to clarify, this is not a proposed project, this is a fully approved project.
Okay.
That we are seeking a modification relative to layout and architecture and unit count. But the project went through 10 years of review and legal battles. All of the questions that you're asking are settled law that went to the land court, that there are easements in place that provide permanent access to Sawmill. So we can certainly dig those things out and provide documentation on that, but...
I'm just trying to educate myself. I wasn't here 20 years ago, so...
Nor was I. So I'm trying, I'm just trying to explain that at this point, those issues are, the issue of whether trying to work with Sawmill to help them with a very difficult and challenging situation, we intend to do as good neighbors and as responsible developers, and that's what we've been working with John Kelly and his group for almost a year now. But the problems that exist with the Shallow Pond Homeowners Association, which are very real, are, make things much more challenging as to how we participate, if you will, in a solution there.
So, my easement question, I don't know if I got that answered.
We have an easement.
You have an easement?
Yes.
Okay. And are there any beach rights in that neighborhood, or Dede Beach Rights? Or does Shallow Pond have any Dede Beach Rights?
Certainly not Sawmill. I can't speak for Shallow Pond.
No? Okay. And...
But it's a great idea, if you have some...
I don't think it's going to happen. And is there any, as far as like buses, I know you got Indian Brook Elementary School that's nearby, has any of that been, like, figured out, like, where the buses are going to be? Are they going to be outside of the complex? I mean, your Sawmill's development, are there going to be more in Shallow Pond's? Is, I don't know if, I'm pretty sure buses come through Shallow Pond, is correct? I'm just...
It's a good question, I don't have the answer, but we'll get, we'll have an answer for you when we come back before the board.
And, and my next question is for staff. How does these affordable count go towards the town?
So, since these are ownership, it's just one unit. So sometimes with rentals, you'll see that if 25% of a building is rental, then all, if it, let's say it's 100 units, 25 is rental, it's all rental, 25 is affordable, it's 100 units, they would all count. Since this is ownership, it's just each unit only, so it's only the units that they show on the chart that will count towards...
So only the 43?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I believe that's all I have. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, excuse me. Mr. and Mrs. Hertz, I commend you on your diligence and your educating yourselves on the derelict fee statute, various vagaries. I have served on the Roads Advisory Committee here in Plymouth for over 10 years, as has Mr. Grandy, so I think he'll have something to say about this as well. This is a perfect situation in which the town should accept Kathleen Drive as a public way. We've been working for several years to get the town to begin accepting more roads. The committee I serve on is advisory, that's part of our name, so we have no real power. We advise the select board, who are the road commissioners. I suggest to you that you petition the select board, as the road commissioners, to direct the DPW to begin the process of accepting Kathleen Drive as a public way. We have accepted Lund's Way and Raymond Road in the ponds of Plymouth in the past several years, so it is doable. Currently, discussions with the DPW, and the Assistant DPW Director is also a member of our committee, they are very short-staffed. I think they're working on bringing themselves up to full staffing, but it's just the nature of the profession right now for engineering, there's not a lot of applicants. So, but that excuse is starting to withen in my mind. So I would suggest to you that you make, if you haven't already, and I actually didn't ask you that, but a petition to the select board, as the road commissioners, to accept Kathleen Drive, to begin the process, because it is a long process, and there's a lot of legalities and complications to it, it's not just a simple, simple thing, as you may well be aware. But I think that, this is a classic case, it's two-thirds of a mile of road, and it really should be a public way at this point. It should have been made a public way when it was developed, but that's kind of another issue that the Roads Advisory Committee is kind of working on. So, other than that, the, just for, is it Mr. Lloyd?
No, it's Mr. Geisinger.
Okay.
But Lloyd works well.
Okay. I apologize, I missed it at the beginning, but, so, how did the number of the $450,000 for the, for the association come up? And before you answer, I do want to commend you on your engagement with the community, because that was really, as I saw this packet come through last week, I said, "Well, I sure hope that we're going to hear from somebody from Kathleen Drive here," because they're impacted by this, of course. And I understand it's already permitted, it's already approved, but if we're looking for a major change in it...
We understand that.
You know, your justification and the things you're offering in exchange for that major modification are substantial, and I commend you for that.
Right, and we fully appreciate that. The, I should mention that the, the cost of topcoating Kathleen Drive was reviewed by Beals and Thomas, and it was, I believe, $270,000.
How long ago was that?
Well, we updated it from that, and as part of our commitment with ZBA, we expect that before the process is done, Beals and Thomas will review the updated numbers.
Okay, so yeah, I was kind of wondering, are those 2006 numbers? Which are relevant to this one?
The numbers that, we actively build roads continuously, so we have very, very current numbers. We also received paving quotes for Drum Drive, to top Drum Drive in connection with our separating Sawmill from the rest. So we had current unit pricing from paving companies. We took the Beals and Thomas numbers, we updated the numbers, we explained at the time to the ZBA that we were going to be back before the board for a major modification, and we fully expected that that cost would be fully vetted at that time and updated accordingly. Having said that, we have a high degree of confidence that the numbers that we've put together will bear out, because we're in that business. The $450,000 represented a $300,000 estimated cost for the Kathleen Drive, plus $150,000 to jumpstart a reserve account that could be used by Shallow Pond for the types of concerns that they come up, that have been expressed here this evening, a water line that breaks and has to be repaired. Principally, that was a concern that's been raised over and over again.
I've heard that from residents as well.
Right.
I really haven't heard a good answer for what happens if that main in the private breaks.
Well, so we were proposed, that's why, and frankly, you know, we'll do it either way, but we thought it made sense to put $450,000 in that account and allow the Shallow Pond people to decide how best to spend that money. But the latest thinking is they want to stick with an obligation on our part to top Kathleen Drive, we're totally fine with that. And then we would talk about some supplemental amount to be negotiated along the reserve. The challenging part here is, as has been described, there's no entity right now that could really receive that money and manage it, so that issue has to be addressed.
Right, I saw that in the documentation as well. And of course, one of the things that came to mind is, okay, so we're going to topcoat a road that we potentially may need to replace the water main in.
Well...
All right. And I understand, and I understand what you just said, is that you're working towards providing them with an avenue to perhaps address that, and also that the, I think you said it was Environmental Partners has studied, made a study of the water main, and I arrived at the conclusion that it is adequate for pressure.
Right.
Albeit it is plastic, and, you know, I'm not a water engineer, and I don't know what the longevity of plastic versus Dr. Liron is, et cetera, but I assume that their report addresses that issue as well.
It does.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of minor questions. For the traffic calming proposal on Kathleen Drive, the drawing only shows a portion of Kathleen Drive, would you do the entire?
We did the entire thing, yes.
And then the other question is about the pool house?
Yes.
Does it have a meeting room in it?
Yes.
Okay, so that's...
It does.
Would be a real benefit to...
We have historically built quite substantial clubhouses. I didn't want, the distinction is really for our customers who go to another Thorndike community and see these very elaborate clubhouses, and we didn't want to misrepresent to them that they were getting a clubhouse like that. We're somewhat moving away from that model. They're very expensive to build, they're very expensive to maintain, they add to the monthly condo fees and homeowners association, and we've gotten quite a bit of feedback. As lovely as they are, they just as soon see them scaled down and less costly to maintain. So this has a meeting room that a group of 20, 30, 35 people could meet in, it has a trustees room for a smaller meeting as well, that can serve as a card room, it has bathrooms, but it doesn't have the big open spaces.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Higgins?
Mr. Hartman, is this going to be added to our agenda for the 26th? Is that what? Was scheduled to go before the ZBA on the 24th, right?
Right, and so what's going to happen is, they have committed to ask for a continuance, and they're going to ask the ZBA not to vote on this, so they can come back to the board, and then they'll, I can't speak for the ZBA, they'll have a follow-up second hearing at some point after the planning board.
The only real question that I had tonight was asked by Mr. Bennett, how the $450,000 was arrived at, but any other questions, I'm going to reserve until the 26th. Thank you.
It took us five months to get through the minor modification last year with the ZBA. I don't think there's any danger, as much as I love the optimism of the ZBA voting on the first evening.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Mr. Grandy?
Thank you. Sometimes it doesn't pay to go last, or second last, because a lot of the questions get asked previously. I will mirror what Mr. Bennett has said as far as the Roads Advisory Committee. I've been on it longer than Mr. Bennett has, and we've been in a long process of getting roads accepted. We have paid our engineering program, I really don't want to go into it, because I could spend a half an hour, 45 minutes on it, but we wrote, I wrote legislation that we got passed through town meeting and through the State House, where the roads in Plymouth were previously considered private, even though they really were unaccepted roads. So now there is language in place, and it allows the town of Plymouth to spend funds to improve, do studies, et cetera, et cetera, on unaccepted roads, not private. And there's only a few private roads in this town, so I don't believe, Shallow Pond, the road you were talking about? Tim, which road were you talking about that should be accepted?
Kathleen Drive.
Kathleen Drive. Kathleen Drive is probably considered an unaccepted road, not a private road. So it probably still does receive the benefit of plowing and maintenance of some time, some sort. and maintenance of some time, some sort, as far as that road is concerned. It's not considered a private road. Does it get plowed by the town currently? Yes, so it's an unaccepted road. It's not a private road. Okay, as far as the terminology is concerned. But yes, we look to try to take roads that are brand-new, built to subdivision standards, and try to get them accepted. Because the town of Plymouth receives so much money per mile on Chapter 90 funds. In the 351 communities, the amount of money is decided upon by the State House, the governor of Massachusetts, and it's dispersed based on certain ratios, which I won't get into completely. But it's, we receive more money by having more accepted roads in the town, in the town of Plymouth. Previously, we didn't have as much accepted roads. Since we started accepting roads, the town is now receiving the benefit of the Chapter 90 funds for every mile that is completed and accepted. But it's hard to get the roads accepted, because you've got to make sure you have the layout. The drainage needs to be in place. There are a lot of things that are required to accept a road in the town of Plymouth, or in the state for that matter.
And what about curbing? What is the position on curbing?
Excuse me?
Well, you've perked my interest with these comments, because the last time I checked in, there were no roads being accepted. When you're looking at accepting new roads.
We have been accepting roads in the town of Plymouth over the past half dozen years. Maybe not since COVID. Once COVID hit, it slowed down, because obviously, as you heard from Mr. Bennett, they don't have enough staff. And we go through COVID, so we weren't really accepting roads. And the Board of Selectment works with us as the advisory committee to the road commissioners, who are the Board of Selectmen. So just to throw a little highlight on that.
Sure.
As far as the residents are concerned, yes, you can petition the Board of Selectmen as far as the acceptance process is concerned. Now, you're going to get on a list, it's not going to happen overnight, believe me. Because when I was, when we were moving to try to get this policy enacted at the State House, I was told that residents would be coming to the town hall with pitchforks to have their roads repaired in the town of Plymouth. Well, that hasn't happened since the legislation has been adopted. DPW, the Board of Selectmen, they do the best they possibly can with the funds they have and the people they have in place to do the work. So back to this particular project. This was originally approved for 200 units?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So right now, you have a permit for 200 units. You're looking to add another 32.
Correct.
Which is a little over 15% increase, if my math is correct. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So of these 32 units, you came to the zoning board of appeals when you had a 30% require requirement for affordable units, right?
The original permit called for 30%.
And it went dropped down to 25.
With the payment that I mentioned of $990,000.
Right, so my question is, of these added 32 units.
25%, 25% would be affordable.
Well, you're asking for an increase, so we don't have to stay to the 25%.
No, you don't. You don't have to do any of this. But the, the ask that's on the table is to increase it from 200 to 232, and 25% of those 32.
So if the planning board made a suggestion, not that we will, that we go back to the 30%, just on the 32 units.
Right.
Right? That could be done.
Of course.
Through discussions, open meetings.
Yes.
Et cetera. So there's the opportunity of maybe getting more affordable units out of this 32 than the 25%.
And another option would be consistent with the conversation that occurred with the Makepeace property, to increase the unit count from 232 to 235. And, and with all three of those, with all three of those units being affordable.
That could be happening, right, exactly. And then you mentioned 110,000 per unit? Was the agreement back?
That's, that's the approved number that's in the, in the comprehensive permit right now.
And what was that, when was that approved?
Three or four years ago.
So obviously, yeah. So the cost has increased in three, four years, as far as that number is concerned also.
I, I can't comment on that, I wasn't part of that discussion.
I'm talking about the cost of living. So if it was approved in 2022 for 110,000.
Yes.
If you were building a unit in 2022, it costs less than building a unit in 2025.
Yes.
So if the cost of living increased 10%, 15%, 20% over that timeframe, maybe the 110 needs to increase, as far as that's concerned also. In just my opinion.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. So that was the big one for me, as far as adding 32 units. So you're taking up more, because you're making it more dense now.
Right, so we're, we've, we have what we consider to be a more efficient plan. And it's the same road layout, but frankly, by introducing these triplex buildings that I, I showed you before, that, the building over here that's in green in the bottom corner, that, that footprint is smaller, the units themselves are quite large. The ground-level unit is, I believe, 1600 or 1800 square feet, and the units above are more than 2,000. But the footprint is smaller than the, our typical three-unit townhouse side-by-side-by-side.
So if you may, if you may, if you could, for your next report, because I'm not going to go on any further, in the interest of time, it's already almost 9:30. Do a calculation for me of your land juice area at 200, and then 232, as far as impervious.
That's, we have, that we already, that information is all in the, in the report.
Okay. It's in the report?
Yeah.
And it shows that you're not creating or using more land on the property?
No, we are. There's more impervious cover than there was before.
Right.
It's a very large site. And the, the entire drainage system has been updated. It was not compliant with the current standards.
And one of my other questions is going to be, how does adding 32 units benefit the town of Plymouth and its residents?
It allows us to go forward with the, with the project. You know, there's been a lot of discussion this evening, and I'm sure you've been hearing it for months and months and months. You've alerted, alluded to it just now, that the cost of construction relative to sale prices. And, and we are not complaining about the 25% of the units being affordable, even though the loss on each of those units is staggering. So for us to make economic sense of being able to deliver that, that 25% affordable, the biggest issue that has come up, frankly, is that with interest rates so much higher now, what you can sell those affordable units is substantially less. Almost $100,000 less than it was back five years ago. So while that is very helpful for people who are looking to acquire homes at 80% of AMI, because it increases the pool, it makes it extremely challenging for developers like us to make economic sense of it. It just doesn't pencil at all. Those 32 homes allow us to make it pencil. It allows us to eke out an 8% profit margin on the overall project.
Now, let me ask you, look just, again, traffic count, adding 32, 32 units also.
Right, so the traffic count ironically doesn't change at all from a traffic engineer's perspective, because the bedroom count hasn't changed at all. And the fact that we are targeting, and the, the traffic engineers calculated on that basis. I think the more relevant comment from a common sense standpoint is that with the introduction of a number of two-bedroom homes and targeting in this multi-generational approach, what we see is a significant number of over 55 buyers. In our project in Rainham, which is the same model, we're about 50 units into it, and more than, well more than half, almost two-thirds of our buyers are 55 or older. And of course, that changes the distribution of traffic, as to when people are trying to get in and out, less rush hour traffic, more during-the-day type traffic. But we can certainly bring our traffic engineer to the next meeting, if you, if that would be helpful.
Okay, I reserve, obviously, the next meeting for some more questions, but I think I've taken enough time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. I'm going to defer until further. I want to give you the opportunity to take in what you've heard from us and from the residents, obviously, and what you hear from the residents again on the 20th. And hopefully, we can have a fruitful discussion for you head before the ZBA.
We look forward to it.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda this evening, we have an informal presentation, Kevin Flaherty of Flaherty &amp; Stefani, and Matt Sheridan of Sheridan Home Builders. Before we start, we're just going to take a quick five-minute recess.
Sorry.
Good evening, the planning board is back in session. Again, tonight, next on our agenda, we have an informal, Kevin Flaherty of Flaherty &amp; Stefani, and Matt Sheridan of Sheridan Home Builders. Good evening.
Good evening. Matt Sheridan, Sheridan Home Builders. Tonight, my team and I are here to present to you informally a project on Wareham Road. With me, I have Kevin Flaherty, Rob Dambrosia, and Andrew Golden, my title and deed expert. I had an entire spiel that I was going to get into and give you guys, and I kind of changed it while I've been sitting here for the last two and a half hours.
Hopefully to make it shorter.
Way shorter. Tonight, I heard all about affordability. I heard a great tagline, price versus pace, and open space. What we're showing you tonight, I actually feel like highlights all three of these, and really brings it home. So I'm actually excited to present this to you guys and get all of your feedback. So this is just a general overview of where we are in Plymouth. It is on the very southern end of town. You can see the town line with Wareham in Plymouth. And you can see where Wareham Road runs right along the property. The overview of our project, it's 44 acres. It's in the RR zoning district. What we're proposing to you is to construct 49 single-family homes, each on its own lot. It'll be 44 market, four affordable, and one veteran unit. The model for the veteran unit will be what I've done in the past with a 10% deed restriction. And I am very pleased to announce to the board that my team and I, we've worked through all of the language with how to actually do that deed restriction, how to make sure it'll stay in place permanently. We have a national lender on board with doing the lending for our veterans program. So this is going to be something that I'm really going to try to make be a staple as we move forward with all of our projects, to keep doing some sort of veteran unit. And it's at that 10% discount that is totally out of my pocket, with no subsidy, no outside aid, purely off the top. Each home within this project would be three or four bedrooms. Excuse me. This slide, to me, is the most telling slide. This shows the average sales price in the last three months for three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath homes, three-to-four-bedroom, new construction, and then what Sheridan Home Builders is going to be starting at for price point for three-bedroom and two-bath. You've got 851,000, 900,000, and we're going to be at 500, starting price point. And that's going to be for a couple of different varieties of style. It's going to be for colonial style, ranch style. And they will all be 500,000 to start. There's not going to be any limitation on how many of them are available at 500. If 44 buyers show up and want to buy all of them at 500 price point, I will gladly sell all of them at that 500 price point. So to me, that touches right there on what we started getting into earlier, listening to other presentations about affordability. This is a market-rate project that's actually designed towards the middle class at that 500,000 price point that the town so desperately, desperately needs. You hear all of the committee meetings and hearings, and everybody talking about people that work in Plymouth that can't afford to live in Plymouth, and they have to go elsewhere. This project gives all of those folks an opportunity to actually live and work in Plymouth if they so choose. These are just a few highlights of the project, how we're going to get there, as I said. The market units, the affordables, the veteran unit. It's 14 conventional lots that we could do on the property because of the RR and the acreage. The additional density is coming through TDRs that we will be acquiring from Makepeace. Open space that we've heard a lot of tonight. We're going to be highlighting 60% of open space on the entire site with walking trails throughout, that'll be natural walking trails. We're going to have a recreational area. It certainly won't be anything as elaborate as the previous presenter had spoken of, but it will be a recreational area, basketball court, playground. We still haven't really gotten into what that's going to look like. And in our dealings down on Wareham Road, we've heard all about traffic. So I have retained a traffic engineer, and they are currently exploring whatever we can feasibly do on Wareham Road to help the current traffic problem. The one thing I need to stress to the board and everybody that might be listening that has an interest in this project is, the current traffic situation on Wareham Road is the current situation. Our project is like throwing a golf ball into the ocean. It's not actually going to make the traffic issue substantially worse. Quite frankly, again, it's like a drop in a bucket. It's really not even going to be impactful. But I am looking into traffic mitigation, and I am committed to doing something for the folks down on Wareham Road to help alleviate their current traffic problems. Access and infrastructure. It'll be a 24-foot-wide driveway, and we're calling it a driveway because it will never be a publicly-accepted road. An HOA will be put in place, and they will be responsible for plowing and maintaining their own roadway. So a lot of the other things we heard about tonight will never be a problem in this project, because everybody buying into it understands that it is a private way, and the town will never maintain it. The stormwater will be collected through catch basins and a water quality unit. It's going to feature natural depressions, so we're not going to be doing all kinds of major excavation just for drainage. We have low-lying areas on the site that we're going to be utilizing for all of our drainage, which is a really nice feature. There will be private wells and septic systems on each individual lot. And another major benefit to this is, we are going to obviously have to clear to build, but it's going to be a balanced site. So by balanced site, that means if I have a hill, I'm going to push it into a hole. We're not looking to ask for any gravel removal permits. We're not looking to ask for any fill removal that... We're home builders, we're not earth-removal companies. So to me, that is extremely important, that everybody understands the engineering team is designing this to be a balanced site, so that way, any fill that does have to leave is as minimized as possible. Do we have the overall site plan? Do we have the overall site plan? I do believe in your packets. You should have gotten the conceptual plan that shows the driveway coming in.
[inaudible]
Yep. It highlights the drainage areas and...
Wareham Road.
I apologize, it's not available on the screen.
So if Pac TV, Local Scene could share my screen or show my screen, there we go.
So you can see on the site plan for the conceptual layout, it highlights the drainage areas, which will be natural, which won't have to be excavated. The project does highlight, you can see all of that green space around the entire perimeter. So that's actually a 50-foot buffer that runs parallel to Wareham Road that actually gives plenty of separation between what we're proposing and the existing homes on Wareham Road. So just so everybody knows, I'm not the one moving this around. So...
Well, I'm trying to zoom in. It's a hard one to show, given the size.
So it does have a 50-foot buffer all the way around the perimeter. You can see it where it's on Maguire Way and then where it runs parallel to Wareham Road. And then, obviously, the rest of the green space is our open space untouched that will feature the walking trails throughout, and we'll tie those in further up the street on Wareham Road. With that, I will turn it over for any questions that the board might have or comments.
Thank you. Bring it to staff first.
So this is at the very southern end of Wareham Road, so the challenge here is that it is about as far as you can get before you're somewhere else. I think what's great is we know that there are a lot of additional TDRs that Red Brook has, the 80 Makepeace. So this is a great opportunity to take some of those TDRs and start to land them somewhere. As was pointed out, you had a base density of about a 14 with one affordable that would be added, and so they're increasing based on the TDRs. So again, challenges, the location in the southern part of town, but using those TDRs, protecting that property, landing them here, creating the price point they have in the affordable housing is great. As was pointed out, I think the big issue here, and you're very familiar with some of the concerns we've heard about Wareham Road, so I think the challenge here is with this type of unit count, coming in with a package that can make the neighbors nearby feel more comfortable, that they're getting some value out of this for those traffic calming or improvements that they can do to make Wareham Road safer for pedestrians and/or cars. The other thing, just always like to point out, they're coming before you informally. This is without the benefit of a public hearing and the comments of abutters, so we're giving some general guidance or feedback to the applicant, but it's always with the caveat that things can change based on what you hear from public comment and at that formal public hearing. So that's my summary.
Thank you. I'm going to bring it, obviously, since it's an informal, we're not going to get public comment at this point because there's nothing of the public to truly comment on. That'll come later. But I'm going to bring it to the board for their initial thoughts with respect to this. So I'm going to start with you, Mr. Higgins.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Grandy.
Couple of questions. A little early for the getting into the design phase of this, right? As far as sidewalks, asphalt, concrete, curbing, things along those lines. A little early, right?
We are early, and that was obviously by design. We wanted to get feedback from you folks before we got too deep into it, but we are anticipating Cape Cod berm for curbing, five-foot-wide asphalt sidewalk, and then, obviously, 24-foot-wide driveway throughout the project.
So you are designing this to the roads to subdivision standards, right?
Well, typical subdivision standards has sidewalks on both sides of the road. We're going to have a sidewalk on one side of the road. But the road width, the road width will be 26 feet, backside of berm to backside of berm, which is subdivision standards.
So the subdivision, there is requirements for some granite curbing, entrances, curves, and then there is a requirement for a poured concrete sidewalk. So it will be, and again, we need to talk about whether you're going to do this as a driveway, or if it's a special permit for an RDD followed with a subdivision road layout, or if it's just an RDD. So we'll have to work at those details, but...
As a Roads Advisory Committee member, we've always, and I have, as a planning board, always would like to see, you don't need the sidewalks on both sides of the road. My street isn't an accepted street. There's only sidewalk on one side of the road. So you can still accept a street with, not right away. I'm talking about one day, when you and I are not here, the residents that live here are going to come to the town of Plymouth and say, "I can't afford to plow it. I can't afford to maintain it." So at least if it is built to the subdivision standards, that it can be accepted at a future date, even though you're saying you're not going to do that because you're going to have a homeowners association, are we going to build it to the subdivision standards, is my question.
So, Mr. Grandy, to that point, the road will be built to town specs, and we'll have all the appropriate inspections through the outside consultant that we have to pay the fee to through the permitting process. So it'll have the 14 inches of gravel, it'll have the six inches of asphalt. So yes, the roads will be constructed to proper specifications, whether or not we're classifying them as a road or a driveway, whatever that'll be, but they will be built to town standards.
What's the distance from the entrance to the hammerhead on the southern part?
It's under 500 feet, right? There's no dead-end road past 500, so it's under 500 feet. And that'll be to, obviously, satisfy the fire department.
Right. So you don't need an emergency access road.
Correct.
Good. That's good. When you come back next time, I'll have a few more questions. But I'm in favor of what you have here right now, which you have drawn.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, once again, Mr. Grant and I have the same questions. Usually mine are a subset of his, but the... My feeling is that roads, it's in the subdivision regulations, you're supposed to prepare the road layout plans. Why not make them public? Why not petition the town to accept the roads?
And I think that's a big conversation for the town. And even recently, we have, so the former town manager said, "No, absolutely not. We're not doing that." The former DPW director said, "No, we're not accepting any new roads." The new DPW director has a different view, and he thinks that he's open to that. But again, I think we need to, it's the highway commissioners and the DPW. Up until very recently, I would say for the last five or six years, there's been a pretty clear message that they've been giving out that, "No, we're not going to do any new roads." So if that changes, I think there is some discussion about that, but again, it's very much one in flux, I think, on the town side.
I think that at the time, you know, for something like Kathleen Drive, that's a tough row to hoe to get that accepted because there's off-road and drainage easements that have to be addressed, who's going to own those, and that sort of thing. In this case, when you have new development and you design it to the town standards, you know, all the documentation is already done. There's not, and I don't want to tell, I don't want to say how much work they have to do because I love when people tell me my job is easy, but the, a lot of the work is done as part of the development process, and it's before it gets too late to some degree. My opinion is that would be best to accept them as public roads, all of them, going forward. I mean, that's...
It'll make my job easier.
It would. I mean, I've done work in, for example, the town of Middleborough, they don't have any private roads. They won't accept, you do not do a subdivision in Middleborough without making it a public way.
The other option, and we have not talked about it, is they could choose to do this as a condominium-type association, just like the sawmill we just saw, where these are just driveways, even though they might be built to our standards, but it's a condo association and driveways. And that's an option that really makes it clear that it can, it won't be a public way, and there's no real issue. We'll just have to talk about what their approach is, but certainly hear their message about subdivision standards.
Yeah, I just think that it better serves the public to accept the roads. And Matt, I think it's, it looks like a good project to me, certainly to increase the density with the TDRs, so kind of combating some of the sprawl, if you will, that the only way we're going to get affordable housing is by increasing density, which you're doing here. I commend you on, if you can make that price point work, that's awesome.
Thank you. And we will work with town staff on how the road's going to be classified, and when we come back in front of you formally, what that'll actually look like.
Yeah, I honestly, I think it's a, it's an added value, really, to the buyer, too. I mean, people don't realize that, and on the Roads Advisory Committee, we get people coming in all the time. "We want to, we want the town to plow our road." Well, unfortunately, you have a homeowners association that says you can't, and we can't recommend it legally. And it happens all the time, and the people were not aware that their road could never become public, you know, and that's, so your statement that you're going to make sure that they know that is also important to me, that, because sometimes the, in very recent subdivisions I've seen, where people were assured that their road was going to become public, and the developer really didn't have the right to make that statement unequivocally. So probably enough time spent on that.
You got it from you and me, Tim. Jeez.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Donaldson.
I love the project. I actually think you should have probably went first to show the rest of those guys what it's supposed to look like when you're doing a development, but that's my opinion. And I'm liking what I hear in regards to the price point, veteran housing, all that. We had a conversation before in regards to this, to this project, and I really appreciate what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, I think we're all in agreement. We like the approach. We certainly appreciate that there is a reason we have a TDR bylaw. This is a good example of the use of our TDR bylaw to create density in an appropriate area with the idea of also creating greater open space as part of development. People will have to understand as we explain this because they're going to be upset at the idea of that many homes going onto Wareham Road. And you're right, it may be a golf ball in the ocean, but these people are going to see this more as a bowling ball in their pond. So I think that the public outreach aspect is going to be significant. Obviously, your willingness to work with the community to try and create some measure of traffic calming, which is something that they so desperately need in this area, will be greatly helpful. People also will need to understand that alternatively, you could simply have built 14 very expensive homes, taking over the entirety of the lot, leaving very little in the way of natural features. So you're to be commended for thinking differently along those lines. So obviously, as you go forward with this process, the thoughts that you're going to hear are going to be making sure that the buffer between yourself and the neighbors on Wareham Road is as thick as possible. Natural preservation of the existing trees rather than clearing and then replanting as best you can. And obviously, the accessway is going to be an interesting point. You're going to be very close to a couple of neighbors as you drive in. Those people are going to be probably front and center here when we go forward with this. So anything that we can do to make them as happy as possible, probably going to be a benefit to you as well as to us. But beyond that, I think you've got a great concept here, and we're looking forward to seeing the details as they flesh out.
Thank you very much.
Anything further? Thank you very much for coming in. Again, also commend you on doing the informal approach so that you start the ball rolling, so that people hear about this with plenty of time in which to start to think about it, rather than have the panic result that we regularly get of the, "No one told me this was happening. I never knew this was going to happen, and I was promised this would never happen." So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Last on our agenda this evening, we have the Citizens Advisory Committee for Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. So, Mr. Hartman.
You have the charge. The Select Board was, did make appointments a couple meetings ago, and they suggested and thought it would be a good idea to have a designee of one of the Planning Board members on this. So again, the Select Board would like to have a board member sit on this committee to work through the update on the comprehensive wastewater plan. A copy of the charge is in there. I'm not sure when they're going to meet yet. I think the first thing a committee like this does is sit down and figure out what works best for a meeting time. But again, the Select Board would like to have a Planning Board member serve on this
Certainly, as we've been going through the master plan process, we've heard a lot about the wastewater issue and the potential future for wastewater management in Plymouth, being very different than the somewhat archaic system we currently operate under. So this will certainly be an interesting, if not challenging, process, and it'll depend, obviously, very heavily on how much effort the town wishes to put into this, and to some extent ultimately, how much money they feel may be available for comprehensive solutions. So with that, I'm going to open this up to any board member, including our associate member, and ask, is anyone interested in serving on this committee? Don't all jump up at once.
Mr. Chairman, I would, but I'm already on too many committees than it is, and I just don't have the time.
That is the challenge that we all face. We have time commitments that are very difficult to manage. I think that we can also certainly say, if we're going to start off with, that we will likely be addressing this over a relatively long period of time, so I don't think the same person needs stay on. I think that it can rotate if that's the case. Bless you. But if no one is interested or available, then I think the answer that we have to send back, unfortunately, to the Select Board is that, given the other commitments that board members have at this point, this is something that we cannot do at this time until, and maybe what we'll say is, we need more details as to when and how often this committee is expected to meet, so that people could manage their calendars better to determine whether or not they have any potential availability. With that...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Higgins.
I do want to express my interest in serving on that committee. However, I think it would be in the best interest for me to postpone that pending the outcome of the May election.
Okay. Maybe that's our first answer, then, that we'd like to, we're happy to appoint someone, but we'd like to have a, make sure that whoever is going to be serving on that is going to be serving for a period, a guaranteed period of time, at the very least. After the May election.
After the May election.
I think that's a, and obviously, in the interim, if they have any indications as to how often it meets, that would be helpful, too. Are there, is there any other business, new business, old business, something that we need to address? need to address? Seeing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned for the evening. Thank you all.